Okay, welcome. This is the Village of Mamaroneck Planning Board meeting on June 22, 2022. I haven't noticed some fire exits, but we don't have to do that. On Zoom again tonight, the governor extended the executive order until the middle of July. So our next meeting will also be on Zoom. And then the extension expires right after that, and we'll just take it one month at a time. Okay. Into the agenda, let me. Let me take attendance. We have all members of the planning board here. Ellen Styler, Cindy Goldstein, Richard Litman, and Seamus the Rock and myself. We have Building Inspector Frank Tavolachi from Kellard Sessions, our consulting engineer. We have John Keller from AKRF for Consulting Planning. We have Alicia Moore from our land use attorneys. And I always mess up the name of your big law firm. We have Charlie Gottlieb and from Terrabella Landscaping. We have our landscape architect consulting landscape architect Susan Oakley. Okay. Before we get into the application that we have one application on the agenda today. We have the minutes from June 8, 2022. Does anybody have any comments on this? Anybody play our little who found a typo game?
Yeah, I have one Kathy. I was looking at the resolution on 1010 Oriente. And on page six, in one of the sentences, we evidently approved pants.
Uh oh.
The word pants is.
That way, that resolution has been signed and has been delivered.
I find that very interesting. Where did that come from?
It might have been plans. I don't know. I didn't print out the resolution and the resolution itself now is filed away in the in the closed application file.
Evidently, we've just endorsed pants, so.
I hardly agree. Let's endorse pants for sure. On Zoom, we never know.
I know that awful commercial. Who puts their screen down like that? Nobody will maybe, I don't know. We did hear some stories about people on Zoom. Yes, we did, didn't we?
My only my only comment was a question. I could go either way on this. Did you guys think that basically the second sentence of this whole thing? Chair Savalt noted that Mr. Keller and Ms. Oakley have responded to the email received by the board prior to the last meeting was a little vague. I'm fine with it. I don't think it's helpful in the notes in the minutes because it would never be able to be understood what that was. I would either strike it or add some more info. But if you guys are good with it, then I don't care very much.
You know, I looked at it and I had kind of the same reaction. And I said, do I want to write more about this? And I said, no, we don't.
If we feel like we want it covered, I'm okay. I would just strike it. I don't know. If you look at that a year from now, I think it's meaningless.
Well, you know what? These minutes aren't meant to actually record everything that was happened and said at the meeting are really action items. And they refer people to the videos that are available online. Of course, that assumes everybody in the world has a computer that might be interested in this, which I still think doesn't happen, but we're getting there.
I mean, I would leave it just because it does represent a conversation and I assume that the comments were posted on the website. So there was an acknowledgement that it was addressed, so I would leave it. I understand it.
It actually refers to something from the meeting before.
It's sort of. No issues, just.
From the meeting before.
Okay.
So I have a little tiny typo.
Okay.
I guess it is on the second page. It is B, where it talks about 415 Claflin Avenue. It has the citation of the village code. It would be section 342-75. C and E would each have parentheses around them.
Okay.
Because it looks like it's CE and I think I'm looking at the code. It looks like it would be both C and E. But so it's 342-75 paren C, close paren, paren E, close paren.
And that was taken right from the agenda for that meeting. And if you look at tonight's agenda, it's the same error.
Okay.
Time that Claflin's been on our on our agenda. We've had the citation.
Yeah, I don't.
Better late than never.
I don't I don't proof the agenda, so I'm just proofing the minutes.
So we're going to have to look at the resolution too when we get there. Make sure we have the right citations.
Okay, good point.
I'm looking at Charlie. And we've been joined by Dennis Drogen, our assistant building inspector. Wait, anybody else have anything on these minutes? Okay, I need a motion to approve the minutes as amended.
So moved.
I need a second.
Second.
Okay, Seamus?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Before we get into the actual application, I just want to take a few minutes to thank Frank Tavolachi, who this will be his last planning board meeting as he is retiring at the end of the month. On a personal note, I want to thank you for your service to the village. And I just want to make note of how wonderful it's been to work with you. It was great that we were able to form a nice relationship between the planning board team and yourself. That continues with your successor, him, Dennis. And I really wish you all the best. You're quite a gentleman and I really enjoyed working with you. And I hope that the other members of the planning board echo that sentiment. So thank you and mon voyage. I hope you have a great, stress-free life from this. Nothing, nothing you're going to do in the future can be as stressful as what you're doing now. Okay, that brings us to the item on the agenda, site plan review for 415 Claflin Avenue. Coming to the end of the process with Claflin. This is for a renovation, an addition, removing a accessory building and I guess we're not moving the pool, although we're moving the location of the pool. We're taking at one pool and putting in another in a different location. So do we have someone here to sort of bring us up to date on what's happened? You know, we have some that just happened this afternoon, so I hope the board members saw saw the emails with the new plans and the issue that arose today. Okay, I see we have Mike with us. I understand that the attorney for the applicant is not with us today because his child is graduating. Congratulations. And who's going to speak?
Kathy, can I please request? I think Kate Baker was also in the waiting room. She's our landscape architect, I think. Yeah, just getting on.
Okay.
So Liam's daughter is graduating tonight, so he couldn't be on the call. He's the architect. We do have Mike. I think there's a few questions from Mike, most of which have been answered last week, last meeting by John Keller. I can hand over to Mike. Mike, if you want to speak first about your portion and then Kate's here to talk about there's a few questions about the tree preservation plan. We understand that we're one of the first subjects you guys have with extensive landscaping being brought in front of you guys, given the new rules that have come online. So we're also learning along the way, but I think we've done a lot of work after the last meeting and I'll let Mike and Kate take over.
Yes, good evening, Michael Stein with Hudson Engineering. It's good to see everyone tonight. So really the changes were very minor. There were some rebranding that we had added, some smaller retaining walls, just to avoid any disturbance of tree roots within the drip line, some adjustments to the stormwater, the alignment of the stormwater piping to make sure we have a out of wood cover over top. But it really was, that was very limited. I think Kathleen maybe will answer everything, the primary questions which were pertaining to landscape.
Right, it was. Sorry, I'm in trouble here. So one thing specifically asked by Susan for us, which we didn't have in the beginning was we only had a few trees shown as protected and specific requirement as for the new guidelines is any tree on the on the landscape on the plot has to be shown with tree protection. So we have 16 total trees and I think, Mike, you guys did a bunch of work on that.
Yes, and then so this is our existing conditions and demolition plan. So we did add a tree protection all throughout, which to, and that's reflected on the trees all around the site that are to remain and stay remain protected.
Right, and another point that's come up was how are we going to access the plot? When we start changing the pool in the back and where does the heavy machinery get it from? It's so initially, I think the preferred route has been from the left side of the property where you know, you can, you still have nothing built on it. But once that is built, the question that was raised, I think there was a prior discussion in the meeting. How does, how do trucks or open doors get to the back? And so we are going to preserve the existing driveway for the pool until the construction and the demolition in the back is completely finished. And our intention is to only remove the driveway once the whole construction is finished. Landscaping is going to, you know, the new landscaping and the removal of this driveway is going to happen in the end. So like, we're not going to cut off this access point for the back of the property, at least until the later stages of the construction.
And that's all right in this area here.
Right.
And I think the plans that got sent this afternoon reflect all of that, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, that this is what got changed this afternoon, right? Okay.
Then we also have a landscape architect on the call today. And then I think there's a few questions about, we have presented a planting schedule with quite a few new trees, but what are we going to do for the existing trees and what kind of mitigation techniques we might use? And maybe Kate can also talk a little bit about her approach to the design that she's had on, you know, what we're going to do with the plot.
First, to address the latest tree preservation plan. We, there was one minor tweak, which was graphically, we punched up the visibility of the contour lines. And then more importantly, we added a lot more notes that support the tree protection that Michael's already showing on his drawings, but we put in text a lot more of the best practices that will help protect those trees prior to construction, all during construction and even after construction. And if you, so those notes roughly go in the categories of root pruning, techniques for doing that and how to how to really do that properly and maintaining the soil moisture, protecting the roots even beyond the fencing with matting and other, you know, techniques to prevent compaction on the roots that extend beyond those those tree protection fences. And then just kind of addressing irrigation, but also having an arborist get involved. Oh, and one more thing, just careful hand trenching anywhere there might be disturbance due to the installation of things like utility lines. So I have to say that in my experience, this set of notes is about the most robust I've seen in a long time. It's usually, you know, fence the tree and kind of leave it at that. And this is, this is a whole methodology of really like pampering the trees all throughout. And this is, this is something that Vic really felt strongly about. He's a lover of trees and so he's really pushed hard for the, you know, the highest and best treatment of these, these trees. So in general, so for the proposed landscape design, we of course, you know, big have a big plant palette that's very focused on natives. And that is, you know, what we're proposing as we plant new trees in the new, you know, landscape after construction.
And you've, you've addressed any trees that may not be fully on the applicant's property? Because there was a mention in Susan Oakley's memo talking about protecting the root systems of neighboring property trees that were close by. So I mean, it looks like most of these trees are on the property. Does it show where which were, which are the neighbor trees that'll be protected?
So all the trees that are anywhere close to the line of disturbance, they're on our property. There are some that are right on the border. I think there's, there's a tree number eight back here. Then there's these two, three, six and seven. They are quite a bit further away from lineup dismiss, but we are going to protect them. And they are on our side of the property. But I think maybe the tree number one, which is not on the property line, that is now going to have protection as dictated by Hudson Engineering Plans. Tree 13 is going to be a little bit further away. So tree 14 didn't have protection before that gets close to the the drywall construction, so that's going to be protected as well now. Every single tree is now going to have formal tree protection around it.
Okay, so there are no neighbor trees that, you know, I see some open areas like just where your cursor was. There are no trees on neighboring properties whose roots would be, you know, it would be so close as to have the roots on your property.
No, that's right. That's absolutely correct. Yes, none of them are going to be impacted. We're not going to push any of the neighbor trees.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Right, we'll move on to then. We did get an application summary sheet from AK. Just recommending that we consider site plan approval for tonight. They had no, no other issues. Alicia, do you have anything that you wanted to add to that?
Nope, all of our concerns have been addressed. Thanks.
Okay, great.
I have something to add.
Okay.
After. After reviewing the most recent tree preservation plan that was sent today, there are a few things still missing. The, the tree protection indication on the tree preservation plan should look more like Hudson's tree preservation on C1, which shows indicates the protection around the drip line of each specific tree whose canopies are different sizes. So that should also be on the tree protection plan so that it reflects exactly what each tree's canopy sizing is. In addition to that, it still needs the tree protect, Village of Mamaroneck tree protection standard SD-1L, which is also on Hudson's plan. And I know this is a new tree law, so I appreciate everyone's back and forth in trying to get this right. I know that there's a lot to include so that the, all the root information and digging around roots that you added to the tree preservation plan is information that's important to include. So thank you for that. But those two aspects still need.
So the, the information is on Hudson's plans for the construction, but the actual plan, tree preservation plan that's required by the new tree law doesn't have the same information in it.
Yes, it shows each tree, but it doesn't reflect exactly the canopy size, which is where the tree protection fencing needs to go.
Right, okay.
Can I just add something? So the irony of the process is the tree canopy measurements and estimations actually from Kate, but she's focusing more on the design aspect than the actual execution document is going to be Mike Hudson's.
Right.
So we can definitely copy over the fences that he's putting on as per the requirements.
Well, I think, I think that, you know, most of the tree preservation plans are not going to come to the planning board because they don't require a site plan. Somebody's going to cut down some trees and there's other trees to be preserved or whatnot. Because we have this information in the site plan, I think it's good to have like belt and suspenders that the tree preservation plan has all the information. But we, as, as, as the owner just pointed out, it is in the documents that are going to be going to the, to the construction type people. So I feel a little comfortable about that, but I'm going to ask Charlie. Can we put a something in the resolution to just require that those two documents, the tree preservation plan be corrected to add those two pieces of information?
Yep, that's not a problem. I just added a note to the resolution to add that as a condition.
Okay, okay, so we can handle it. Everybody comfortable? Okay, all right, great. Susan, do you have any other comments?
No, that's it.
Thank you for all your work as well as the applicants' work for our very first foray, foray into the tree preservation plan world. So thank you. We did get an opportunity to comment on the, on the law only after it was passed. We were focusing more on process and and code and not on the actual document. So this was our first sort of real life experience with it. Might have some more comments back to the board trustees now about our tree committee did a great job with a lot of detail. A lot of years, okay. John, do you have, John Keller? Do you have anything to add? I know you were also instrumental in helping with the tree canopy and the moving, making sure the access to the back of the property this afternoon was was appropriate during construction, keeping the driveway. Is there anything else?
I was happy to be involved. Hudson's office addressed all our issues this afternoon. Obviously, prior to that, all the drainage issues and site plan issues. We're happy with the plans.
Okay, does any member of the planning board have any other questions or comments that they would care to make?
I just have a question about the resolution, but.
That's same with me, just a resolution question.
That's considered, we then write to the resolution, which is the next thing on the agenda. Okay.
Seamus, do you want to go ahead?
No, you go, Cindy, and maybe it's the same thing.
Okay. Um, I, this is more of a question about consistency in our resolutions. When we talk about the maintenance of tree replacement, so it's item 10 on the condition list. It talks about maintaining the plantings and replacing them if they don't make it through two calendar years. So a nitpicky question is, how do you determine the calendar year? Is it? Two calendar years is an odd term to me, but maybe Charlie can explain that. But I think what Teresa always said to us is that anything in the conditions talking about replacing trees or vegetation, it was basically in perpetuity. There wasn't a time limit on it. You know, if it dies in year three or four, that the applicant is then off the hook and can take it down according to the tree law. I, I just am not sure where the two-year replacement language, it seems more limiting than what I thought I understood the requirement in previous applications to be.
Because I read that sentence by saying that, that's it, that that sentence is in accordance with the, with the tree law. Local law number five of 2021.
And, and it may be, but, but do you remember when Teresa has explained to us in the past that, you know, these requirements of following a landscaping plan is basically in perpetuity? Not that someone's going to.
Well, if the board has passed a code to change that.
So they've actually limited the responsibility of the homeowner to now only maintain trees for two years and replace them if they should die.
I'd have to go look at the tree law, pull up the code and look at the tree law. Assuming that our regular land use attorney didn't read it well. But that's the way that reads to me. You know, I, I don't know if now that that law is on the books, we can't do anything else than that.
No, and I'm not saying we should. I just accept that, that I, again, maybe I'm misremembering what Teresa told us.
No, I think we did have a discussion about this because we did do something. Now guess what?
Yeah.
Are now incorporated into, was incorporated into the code. They must have done an update.
I see it. It doesn't survive for two calendar years. That doesn't make sense if you plant in October. The first year ends December 31st. That's just kind of silly, but.
I think they meant 24 months.
That would have made more sense.
Yeah, 24 from the day to two years.
Two calendar years from the day that they were planted. That's the way I read that.
Yeah.
But it's weird, but be that as it may.
Well, there's a lot of things weird in this law. That's why we sent pages and pages of comments.
Some of which were taken and some of which weren't, as we're finding.
So I. They haven't, they haven't reviewed our comments. It's on the work session agenda.
They get nothing done in this village, clearly. So obviously, this is, this is, this is the law. I get that, but I think we need to amend our comments because again, Kathy, if you, I don't know who else remembers this, maybe I was dreaming, but I thought Teresa made it clear that these requirements to keep the plantings alive was in perpetuity. Again, you know, within reason, nobody's going to be the tree police in 10 years from them say, oh, that oak tree died last year, you need.
Well, I have a candidate for the tree police.
But I think we've, we've actually made it with this particular part of the law. And I'm sorry, this has nothing to do.
I mean, unless the, unless the site plan part of the code says something different than the tree code, the new tree law, because there was no, you know, there was no comparison of the different sections of the code as we know, when the tree law was built.
Well, then we have a bigger problem because we have two parts of the code that conflict.
Gee, well, I didn't say that we do. I'd have to go and look at.
I understand, but I, so, you know, obviously this is fine with me and Seamus, maybe this is your point too. I don't know.
I would guess not, but let's see if I'm right.
It was not.
Site plan reviews. I, you know.
This is fine, but, but I think we have a problem.
Oh, the, the way I, and I'm sorry, I had some technical difficulties there, but the way we've drafted the resolution with the tree law in mind and excuse me because I'm about to be interrupted by a child. But it is that for a period of two years after the planting, if they don't survive, they would have to be replaced by the applicant. That's the only limitation within the tree law. So there was no language of perpetuity in the tree law.
No, we understand that, but I think, you know, the other resolutions we've done, Teresa advised us, they were, there was no time limit on those.
In the past, we've done, you know, basically they have to be replaced. So now that this new law is in place and, and we have our first experience with this new law, the question is, can we still say in perpetuity or leave out the two years? I, you know, we can't have every applicant like this particular owner who values trees and wants his yard to look nice and to be full of plants and trees and things for pollinators. So that's the question. I don't know exactly where.
That is, you know, if that's what this board has done in the past pursuant to its site plan authority, which includes landscaping review and so forth, that would be appropriate. We just added the language, I believe, to be compliant with the tree law and to be consistent with the tree law. But you have the ability under your site plan review authority to add additional language if you would like.
Okay, okay, so we can strike. We can, we can change that, that condition. In the event that any of the trees planted shown on the tree protection plan. In the event that any other trees planted shown on the tree protection plan, um, do not survive following planting, then they shall be replaced at the applicant's expense and strike the two calendar years and strike the, in accordance with the local law file, which is no longer, um, available as a reference anyway, because it's been incorporated into the code at section. Okay, as long as we, so that, does that answer your question Cindy?
Yeah, that works for me, is if we're allowed to do that. I, I think that's been our policy in the past.
He says we are, so.
Yeah, the tree law is separate and apart from your site plan review authority. So that, the tree law essentially sets the base, and then you can use your site plan authority, um, as needed above and beyond.
Excellent, okay.
Kathy, I sent you a link to it if you wanted to get it. I just emailed you a link.
No, I, I have it up on my other screen. Yeah, I found it, yeah, thanks. Okay, uh, Seamus, you have a comment about the resolution?
Yeah, I just wanted to, because, you know, since we had a lot of correspondence even just today on this, which is always hard to make sure that you're looking closely at the latest version. The, um, let me say it very approximately first, then we can narrow in. Between the, um, colored sessions whereas, uh, segment, and then even down in the reference to section two, I, 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 I think we should have a June twenty-second date in here.
The second whereas on the first page, uh, we all, we know all those dates have to change. Never came in today.
And, and then I did just want to ask that, with to maybe John Keller, but Susan, just that you guys collectively looked at the same thing, which is what came today. And so when we reference that, you are good, right? Because I know that there was some changes even between, um, how the, you know, some changes from the landscape to the engineering and just making sure that you guys looked at the same final version.
Yes, with the changes that I mentioned that will be in the resolution.
We actually were on the conference call together, which makes me happy. People are reaching out and working together. It's good. Yeah, yeah, there's a lot of, there's a lot of cha, uh, changes of the dates, you know, where it says, you know, dated June tenth, last revised June tenth. There's multiple changes that have to be changed to the twenty-second.
And then, do, did the final change, the, the June twenty-second, does that, uh, get rid of the need for number two? Was that covered now, or, or is that even still outstanding? Other items were.
The second condition?
Yeah, the second condition, sorry, yep.
Oh, that probably can come out, although, um, prior to the, so the building permit sheets A one P one hundred, P one oh one should be.
That has to remain.
It has to remain?
It should too, has to remain.
Okay, and, and is it, so that were those, were those versions just not touched? They were not changed? They're, uh, based on the conversation that happened?
Uh, we were focused on the, uh, the construction access this, this afternoon and during our discussions, was primarily focused on that. So I didn't even check the curb line, whether that was adjusted or not on the plan. So I'd rather leave the condition in.
And then we have to add the condition that Susan brought up, the tree, uh, protection plan, needs to be amended to show the tree protect, protection, um, indication. That should be the same as what's on Hudson C one plans. Now the protection should be at the canopy. Is that correct, Susan? I took good notes, I hope. And the second is that the tree protection plan standard S D one L should be reflected in the tree protection plan. Uh, it's on the Hudson plans, but not in the tree protection.
Yeah, it's on Hudson's, uh, sheet C three.
Okay. Are, are planning board comfortable with moving forward with the resolution that's got?
Yeah, there's just a small error, uh, in the first, whereas, uh, the address is wrong. Should be four fifteen, not four twenty-five.
Good eyes. I've probably read this five times, I've read five different verses of this.
I'm making the changes as you guys go, so that, I just added that.
Okay, um, oh, this says C and E sections, okay. The third whereas has to correct code citation, so check that. I mean, there's nothing here of substance, other than adding that one condition and making the change to condition ten. So, you know, we're good. With approving the, uh, resolution as amended. Everybody, anybody have any objections moving forward? I need a motion then to approve the resolution as amended, as just discussed.
Oh, Richard.
My turn.
I need a second.
Second.
Okay, um, Cindy?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Seamus?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay. I'm glad you were here, Charles.
Yeah, and, and just to know, as I look through this, I think there's a fair amount of work to get the right June twenty-second dates in throughout, so we should just look really carefully because we haven't seen the right version of that, so.
Yeah, well, what happens now is, uh, Charlie and Truce will clean this up and send it to me, to be signed. So I'll check everything, unless I want, unless you're volunteering for me, forward it to you and you can go and send it back.
Happy to be deputized if needed. You just, there's just a lot of June twenty seconds throughout.
Yeah, yeah, and not everything was resubmitted, so some things are still going to be, I, I totally get it. So, all of the, all the documents are all available, uh, to, uh, to Teresa and to Charlie, so we should be good. Okay, all right, um, thank you very much. Um, we can, um, say goodbye to the four fifteen Cleflin folks. Good luck.
Thank you.
Run into any supply chain issues like everybody else is doing.
We'll be sending back the updated landscape plan with, uh, the two changes you need.
Great, thanks.
Thank you.
We'll see you at your next meeting.
Alright, thanks.
Okay, and that brings us then to the, um, the last time in our agenda, just a discussion tonight with regards to a process for planning board to be involved in a comprehensive plan update. I don't have a lot of history to tell you about this, other than the process began, I believe, back in two thousand and nineteen. And it was perceived at that time as sort of being an update, uh, like not a major comprehensive plan effort. Um, but just sort of like an update. I think it morphed from then, but then it ran into the pandemic. And so, uh, everything got put on hold. And so now, um, the board of trustees is trying to revive the effort. The consultant who had been, um, engaged is still with the project. And he is sending out emails to people, letting them know that the, um, process was starting up again. I did not get that email as the chairperson of planning board, I got that email because I had attended, uh, one or two of the sessions. There was no information in the email or once I looked at the schedule as to what their timeframe was, I did send an email to the consultant um, and asked him for more information and explained that the planning board was meeting tonight. I invited him actually to join us, but he's, uh, was not available. So basically, what he told me is that you're going to be doing a rewrite in August. So we have between now until the end of July to put together any comments that we might have on the entire four hundred and something page document. Um, which, um, the email I sent to you, I didn't, I didn't click the link before I sent it, I just forwarded to you all. And then when I went to click the link, the link didn't work. I had to view it in a, as a browser. If you brew it, view it, you know, it says if you can't reach this, you know, view it in your browser. And the, the link didn't work, but Brittany was kind enough to send the link, um, out to everybody today. There are, let's see, ten chapters and there's, um, five of us. I, I don't know how, uh, to go about this, other than everybody read everything and, you know, put our comments together, or we can split up chapters so that everybody doesn't have to read all four hundred and eighty pages plus the appendices. But, um, I think a lot of this stuff is intertwined. So if you read one chapter and you don't read another, you not, you're kind of missing how this all supposed to fit together for a comprehensive plan of the future of the village of America, which is supposed to inform our work. You know, the current comprehensive plan, those of us who went through the, the big sequel review for the Hampshire Country Club, one of the points, you know, for sequel is, is it, is it, uh, copacetic with the comprehensive plan? We don't really look at the comprehensive plan for some of these smaller projects that we do, um, because they're not changing anything of the character, but it is important, and it's by law, we have to have an updated comprehensive plan of, of so many, yeah, there's so many, I don't know what the actual rules are, but I think we're probably well behind.
So Kathy, do you, does, does the current draft represent what the elected officials want to see? Or is it just kind of a conglomeration from the consultant and comments they got from the comprehensive?
There were meetings, there were workshops, members of the public were invited to them. I can't say that they were well attended. Um, but there were, you know, they went through a comprehensive plan process where they were supposed to reach, you know, you're supposed to reach out to the community and get a lot of community input. They're planning on doing more of that, community input, um, sort of reviving it. It's kind of important, really, to get the community input. I don't think it's reflective of the elected officials. I think it's more, uh, the work of the consultant with some community input. You know, if, if, if an elected official showed up at a workshop, they certainly could, um, participate. I think the town of Mamaroneck is doing this now. If anybody has seen the, the Facebook posts or, you know, things telling everybody that this is going on and that, you know, please come to these workshops and stuff like that.
You did, well, maybe Richard would know. Did, did a previous planning board ever opine on any of this?
Not, not directly. Um, I, I think we were given the same information that the general public got. I, I, I vaguely remember going to one, at, at one planning board meeting, there was a discussion of maybe one or two chapters, but it was all very iffy, very, very premature, very tentative. And no, nobody really formally sought our input.
Yeah, no, I, um, I was on the planning board for some of this. I mean, I, this is my, end of, I'm going to be five years at the end of December. I'd be in December, so I can think I can remember back to two thousand and nineteen. I, I, I think my name was attached to an earlier planning board, uh, comp plan. And so I was getting emails, uh, based on that or based on other involvement I've had with the village. I don't recall, uh, the, the previous chairperson of the planning board reaching out to planning board members the way we're doing, saying, okay, planning board, this is important to us, uh, and thank you, Seamus, for enforcing that that notion in my head, um, and that we should do something about it. I mean, I didn't, I didn't necessarily go to these workshops as a member of the planning board, as Richard said, I, I went as a member of the public. But planning boards are usually involved in, in, uh, in these.
Do you think we could ask the consultant to send us the, the plan in its current state so that we could do?
That's what we have, that's what you have.
I, I was unable to, to get to it.
There's, there's a very, there's a very easy way to get to it. The, there's a website, so if you go to, um, I think it's plan V O M, let me see there. If you go to, uh, plan V O M, very simple, P L A N, V O M dot. You get the latest on it, and then you can just click and download as a PDF, you have it right on your computer. So there are links and as, they may work, that some of them worked for me, some didn't.
I must have missed it, I'll look for it.
Yeah, and Brittany, uh, sent you a link this afternoon.
I couldn't get that to work either.
Didn't, it didn't work.
View it in a browser?
Try the website, you'll get, you'll get it no problem with the website, it's, it's.
Yeah, the link was the direct PDF.
It can't be emailed, it's too large to be emailed. The only other thing we could do is upload it to a shared drive or something.
So I'm, I'm at that website, I've looked, I see a twenty twelve comp plan.
Go to the very bottom.
Okay, the twenty, November twenty twenty?
Yes, yes, that's it.
So that's downloading a PDF which will take all night.
But then you'll have it.
No, it's not. It, it downloaded fast.
Yeah, downloads fail. Same on your computer and that's how you can read it.
Got it.
I don't think you want to print it out.
No. So it's, it's the third draft, November second.
Yes, yes, that's what it's called, third draft, yes.
I think I have to look at the whole thing, so I, you know.
That was my, that was my thinking, but, uh, you know, I would, ah, do I want to look at this whole thing? But we have time, you know, why don't we try just to see what we can get done between now and the next meeting? After week, so we have three weeks.
And I, and I think there's a fair amount of skimming, that I, I actually read this like two years ago or whenever, kind of, not word for word, but there's a fair amount of skimming you can do. And one thing I would say is, obviously, I think, but, you know, we can all collectively think about this. I don't think we're looking for our comments as individuals and residents. It's, it's really just kind of skimming through like, where is the planning board? Be relevant, so I, 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 you know, I'm thinking that helps too, but I gotta, I gotta look at it again as well, before the next meeting maybe, so.
So then we would put together a memo and send it to the consultant, and that's the end of it.
I, I did get an email from Ashley volunteering to compile our comments.
She does a great job with that.
Yeah, yeah, so, so why don't we, we, we have two meetings, um, in, in July. I've invited the consultant to come to the next one. We could either comment or ask questions or a combination of all of those things. He hasn't responded, he's not, he's out of town. But he responded quickly to my question about the schedule. So I'm assuming he'll respond to this when he gets back. And, um, let's just kind of plow through and see what we come up with. That's, uh, sounds like a plan.
It's still less, it's still less paper than Hampshire, so we're, it's kind of.
It is less paper than Hampshire, and I'm looking at my old folder. Actually, I, I do have notes from meeting number two, which was April sixteen, twenty eighteen. Um, I don't have any notes from meeting number one, because I probably wasn't there. But the handout from agenda from meeting number two I have with notes on it. And then I have some draft manuscripts, and then I have another leaving note from October twenty nineteen, where they were talking about individual chapters. So it started in two thousand and eighteen. And, um, as, if you read the email from the consultant where he indicated all the things that had been going on in the world since they started, um, that would possibly impact, um, I think he, he kind of got, got, you know, the flavor of some of the things that have changed, not only the pandemic, but other things in culturally that have changed in, in, that could it possibly impact? Including Ida and flooding and other things, cultural changes. Alright, so that sounds like a plan, yeah. Frank, you can always volunteer to help us with this, if you're bored in retirement. A little, a little light reading.
Me take you up on that.
The more the merrier.
Frank is making his phone number unlisted.
I don't, I only have his work number, so. But that's okay, we won't bother you. We won't bother you. Any stress in your life. Um, okay, I think that's everything on our agenda then. It sounds like we have a plan.
Kathy, thanks for bringing that up. I think that, you know, if there's not much as a playing board, then great, we can skim through it, but I think it's, you know, why not look at it?
And, and I mean, and everybody, of course, is, is certainly welcome to participate as, as individual resident of the village of Mamaroneck in whatever workshops, you know, uh, uh, anything that they do. And hopefully, you'll be, you know, put on the mailing list, the planning board will put on the mailing list, so you'll get notified and things like that. If not, I get things, I try to share them. Okay, cool.
So moved.
Do I have a second? All right, I think Ellen spoke up also. Kind of waved. Let's see, Ellen, give us a second. Okay, let's just do a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. All right, good night, everybody.
Bye.
Thank you very much.
Good night.
Night.